Welcome to the City Commission meeting this December 20th, 2022. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. For those of you who are here for the first time, I'll just give you a little bit of a heads up as to how these proceedings happen here. First of all, is this my script? You don't trust me? So we use these meetings as an opportunity to recognize individuals, events, or organizations at the beginning of our meeting, and thank them all for their commitment to our city and making it better. But before we get to that point, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd ask you, for those who are not yet standing, please stand and join me in the pledge. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst. Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sterman. Not here at the moment. Mayor Trent House.
Thank you. So we have a quorum. We have the first stop, the minutes from the previous meeting, minutes for October 3rd, and the October 18th. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Seconded? Please call the roll.
Mayor, there's also some agenda announcements on there?
I s- oh, I'm sorry. We'll get to that in a moment.
Okay. So this is for the minutes?
This is just the amendment amendments amendments in the agenda.
Just the minutes?
Just the amendment, just the minutes in the agenda, I meant to say.
Okay. But we have the walk-on and everything to-
I get all that. Oh, I see. I see. I'm sorry. So I took it out of turn. All right. So let me go back. These are agenda announcements. PH 2 and PH 3, the applicant is requesting to defer until January 10th, 2023, which will take up when those items come up. So anyone who's here tonight with regard to PH 2 and PH 3, those will probably be deferred, and we'll vote on that deferment when the item comes up. A walk-on resolution. This is appointment of the alternate and second alternate to the Broward League of Cities, the Board of Directors, for 2022 and 23. And then some changes to some of the other agenda items. CM 4, Exhibit 4, Page 2 is revised. The word quarterly replaced by the word monthly in paragraph 4. CP 3, Exhibit 1, Page 7 was revised. The language for professional liability and/or errors and omissions was removed. And R 4, the CAM was revised to correct the name of Bahia Mar Marina Village. Exhibit 2, Page 4 was revised to to the word insurance was inserted as additional language in paragraph 6. You got that, Commissioner Glassman?
I do. Thank you.
Are there any other changes or agenda announcements?
I just wanted to note that some people stole our Halloween costumes. I can't even believe it.
Okay. Any other additional agenda announcements or changes? If none, now I would ask for the approval of the minutes and the agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman, not present. Mayor Trent House.
Yes. And so the minutes and the agenda as amended are now approved. And so now, the presentations. Where's Chief Kerr? I'd like to invite her to the podium to acknowledge fire safety personnel that were deployed to assist in search and recovery efforts in efforts in post hurricane Ian. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. I would please ask all of the members that were invited to be recognized to please come forward.
If you could all please stand in front of the dais and sort of face that way so everyone can see you. And the pup. I thought you guys had Dalmatians.
No, none of those. They're too high strung. Okay. On September 30th, Hurricane Ian made landfall, causing catastrophic damage and unthinkable loss of life. That category four storm reduced many beachfront towns to rubble, and the storm surge flooded large swaths of the state. Many of us lived through the devastation through media coverage and by helping make and helping by making donations. The people standing here today and others were part of the teams that responded in the immediate aftermath. A total of 34 Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue personnel were there, providing much needed assistance. The State of Florida Emergency Response and Planning tasked the following services. Urban search and rescue. These teams went door to door and through live aboard boats to rescue and assist more than 2,500 people. Due to the storm surge and king tides, hundreds of boats were pushed into the main groves. Searchers used drones to determine if a boat was even inhabitable before sending people into hazardous conditions if a search wasn't needed. Strike teams comprised of engine and rescue, which is our medical teams, were deployed to work at fire stations and respond to emergencies while the local personnel could tend to their homes and their families. Health and wellness peer support. Personnel who are trained to provide emotional and behavioral support during times of stress to both the responders and in some cases, the victims. Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue has a team of personnel who do this locally and at sites such as Surfside and Post Ian on the West Coast. We also have therapy draw dogs who have assisted in that response. And as you can see, one of them is here today. Fire station critical needs assessment. This was tasked to the fire inspectors who also conducted damage assessment. Public Safety Command Vehicle was loaned to Lee County and served as the Joint Information Center, otherwise known as AGIC. Logistics and warehousing of supplies was handled by our CERT volunteers who are up here in their green shirts. And to date, our CERT team has responded on three separate deployments to do the same thing. In addition, within days, 33 members of our IFF Local 765 joined other firefighters from across the state and placed feet on the ground in the hardest hit areas. These firefighters assisted battered first responders and their families by completing the tasks they simply could not get to. Tarping roofs, clearing debris, cutting trees, removing water damaged materials from homes are just some of those tasks that were completed. However, the most important item that our firefighters and volunteers provided was hope. Please join me in thanking these men and women, those here today and those that couldn't be here for doing their part.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Now, I have the second part. Don't send away yet, Mayor.
I know. There's a second item.
So now I would like to individually recognize two members of Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue who received a Medal of Valor from the Chiefs Association of Broward County. And I'd ask Chief Stephen Golan to step forward, please. And our other firefighter who would not be here was Matty Johnson. Battalion Chief Stephen Golan, on Saturday, August 20th, after just finishing dinner with his wife and other family members at a restaurant and plantation, he heard a single gunshot from across the dining room. And as you can imagine, commotion and chaos ensued. While other patrons were taking cover on the floor and some ran for the exits, Battalion Chief Golan was able to hear a male that was in the vicinity of the gunshot stating he had been shot. He approached the individual individual and was able to ascertain there was no threat to any others as the individual had accidentally shot himself in the leg. After asking someone to call 911, he began patient assessment, and was able to determine that an entrance entrance wound on the right upper thigh with what appeared to be an arterial bleed. Chief Golan began treatment by removing his belt and applying a tourniquet. The clasp on the belt didn't seem to hold, so he used a second belt and was able to get the bleeding to slow down. The male patient then stated he felt like he was going to pass out. Chief Golan then lowered him to the floor and applied direct pressure to the wound using napkins from the restaurant. An arriving plantation police officer provided a cat tourniquet, which was then applied and able to be placed high enough to control the bleeding. Rescue arrived shortly after, and the patient was transported to Broward Health, where he was immediately taken to surgery and eventually made a full recovery. If it weren't for Chief Golan's cool demeanor and ability to communicate the situation to arriving law enforcement, the scene could have been much worse. And if he hadn't taken immediate action in the triage and treatment of the individual, the outcome could have been fatal. Please join me in congratulating Chief Golan for preventing mass chaos and for saving a life while off duty. And I want to tell you about our second firefighter that received the other award of valor, Medal of Valor. He was unable to be here tonight. Firefighter Paramedic Matthew Matty Johnson. On March 22nd, well, at home, Matty was in his driveway washing his car when he heard an explosion. He stepped back and looked up in the sky to see a column of smoke starting to rise from behind his house. He jumped in his car, drove two blocks over to find a house on fire with no fire rescue unseen. He approached the house that had heavy smoke showing and could hear people inside. Without his usual personal protective equipment, he entered the house and called out for people inside who said they were looking for their dog. Firefighter Paramedic Matty Johnson assisted them, found the dog, and then removed the dog and the family from the home. Then, not sure if there were other people in the home, he again made entry to search for occupants and the fire. During the search, which revealed there were no others in danger, he found a rear door with a garden hose connected nearby. He charged the hose, made entry for a third time, and kept the fire in check until Miami-Dade Fire Rescue arrived. Firefighter Paramedic Johnson's actions that afternoon put his life in immediate danger. He truly put his life on the line for those of his neighbors. In typical Matty Johnson fashion, he wasn't done helping yet. He was instrumental in starting a fundraiser which yielded $2,000 to assist the family with recovery from the fire. The family told him that the insurance adjuster stated the house would have been a total loss if not for the early application of water keeping the fire in check. Matty's quick action prevented a serious tragedy, preventing any loss of life and destruction of their home. Please join me in congratulating firefighter paramedic Matthew Johnson. And I personally want to thank each and every one of you and all those that responded. You always make me proud to be your fire chief. Thank you so very much. Good night and have a wonderful, safe evening.
Chief Kerr, can you come in front so we can take a picture? Yeah, please. Warren. John, would you mind standing up? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have lunch with him. In March. Okay, so we'll now move on to the consent agenda. This is an opportunity for any individual member of this commission to pull an item and to be able to discuss and vote on it separately. If that item has not been pulled by any member of this commission, if a person who's here tonight wishes to speak on a consent agenda item, I would invite them to come forward and to be able to address the commission once we've completed the process up here. So let me first ask Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items on the consent agenda that you'd like pulled? None? Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, I just have one, Mayor. CM 2.
CM 2. And Vice Mayor?
CP 3. That's more for information.
CP 3. Okay, so CP 3 and CM 2. Mr. Brown, you just, you don't, okay. Okay. So except for CM 2 and CP 3, do I hear a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and those items are now approved. If you are here on any of those items, you're welcome to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting as we will, and or you you are also allowed to leave. So moving forward, CM 2, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this discussion came up at my pre-agenda meeting last evening. And Chief, can you maybe come to the podium? I want to just ask a couple of questions that were mentioned last evening at my meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners?
How are you?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. So if perhaps you could just go through the list, and I know there is one, Exhibit 1. There was a concern expressed by some folks on my meeting about possibly over-the-top vehicles, a little bit too militaristic. If you could just explain what these vehicles are so that folks aren't thinking that all of a sudden tanks are coming into their neighborhood?
Correct. No, that we have no intentions of doing that. In fact, this, we're not making a request for any kind of equipment with this item. In fact, all this does is set the stage, so to speak, so that we can make a request should we do that. The equipment that we have requested in the past and we have now, Humvees, high-wheeled vehicles of that nature, no tanks, no, no, someone mentioned bazookas, nothing ridiculous like that, so.
Because on Exhibit 1, Page 1 of 1, so what is the armored vehicle?
What's on that list is, keep in mind, we're not requesting any of that. These are things that we could if we wanted to.
Could request.
And if we were to request something, we had to come back before the commission again to authorize that request.
Okay, so actually, nothing is being requested?
Nothing's being requested.
Just to give you the option in the future of requesting something?
Right. So if in the future something became available, such as a high-wheeled vehicle that we could use in the aftermath of a hurricane or something, we'd come back before the commission asked to acquire that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Chief. I can move the item when we get to that. Thanks.
CM 2 is now moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and CM 2 is now approved. CP 3, a couple people signed up to speak. Vice Mayor, what are the questions you wanted to-
Well, this is more for informational purposes. This came up at my pre-agenda meeting. Dr. Gassman was kind enough to explain that. If, I don't know if you want to go ahead. The question was, is it for pickup or just what's different now? Just, no, she explained it very well in our pre-agenda, but it might be for the general public's benefit.
Dr. Nancy Gassman, Assistant Public Works Director, Sustainability. This item is the second part of solid waste management. There is collections, and then there is processing and disposal. This item is related to the green yard cart disposal only, so it's vegetative waste, and it is an existing proprietary contract, which we are requesting your authority to extend.
Okay. Is Ms. Crave here?
Here.
Did you, you signed up to speak. Would you care to speak?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council peoples. You may call me mistress. I am here standing neutral to the motion approving an agreement for the proprietary purchase of yard waste processing and disposal. I do, however, find it interesting that you will spend almost $1 million to hide your secrets down the drain. Hiding that condom I know you use to cheat on your spouse with. So, I propose that you use a quarter of that mill to support doms and subs in Broward County, to build a dungeon created for us by us, the taxpayers and voting citizens. In closing, do not let this glamorous look distract you from doing your duty to take my demand. I look forward to spanking each and every single one of you at the new esteemed dungeon. You are dismissed.
Okay, thank you. And happy holidays to you. Anyone else wish to speak? There being none?
City manager, are there any districts that have a dungeon?
Not that I know of.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Thank you.
I thought there was one at the Sapphire.
No, no. Please.
I know there were a couple of proposed clubs of a variety of natures from a couple of years ago. I thought they were mostly in District 2 though.
Mostly, we have a lot of things going on in District 2, but no, I don't think we have any dungeons. But, ooh, there you go.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve CP 3?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second, but not for the dungeon.
It's been second.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes. Before we proceed, I just want us to turn to a serious moment. As you see on the poster in front of us, today is Homeless Persons Memorial Ceremony Day. And the public is invited to remember and recognize the lives of persons who died this year in Broward County while experiencing homelessness. During the service, the names of 98 homeless persons who died in 2022 will be read aloud. A bell will ring and an ornament will be placed on a memorial tree to recognize and pay tribute to our neighbors who died on the streets. Broward's Homeless Memorial Ceremony, an annual event commemorated across the United States, will build on the theme of remembrance, hope, and support. So it's it was supposed to start shortly at 7:00, but I just want, I thought we'd take a moment now and have a moment of silence and to respect those folks who passed away. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I apologize. I inadvertently forgot to add CR 1 to my list of items to pull.
Well, we've already voted on it.
Oh, my gosh.
If you want to talk about it, you can, but we've already-
I do, and I, you know, I apologize for that. I had it on another piece of paper. A while back, we talked about creating what was then called an EMS Advisory Committee, and that went through the process, and we had a, we had a presentation from Chief Bottin about that. But in talking to folks, I just think that perhaps we could do an amendment to that resolution where it's called Fire Rescue Advisory Committee as opposed to EMS, just so that it's a broader approach and just so that it's more encompassing in terms of the tasks that they would have. And I, again, I apologize for not-
Thinking Fire Rescue is more encompassing than EMS? I thought EMS encompasses everything.
No, no. Steve is right.
No. And I, I just think it would be a better, a better fit for that advisory committee before they start. I don't know if we're able to bring it back or that one item, but again, my apologies for that.
Is this a, is this, Alan? I need your help. So we've already approved CR 1, which is a consent resolution. Commissioner Glassman feels that we should modify the name of the advisory committee and call it, what?
The, instead of EMS Advisory Committee, Fire Rescue Advisory Committee.
Can we just do that as a, as a walk-on item, or how would we do this?
No, if you're just changing the name, you just prefer that name. You've approved the committee in and of itself, so we can just make the change in the resolution. Just, I would revote on it just as amended.
Okay, so, okay. CR 1, we're gonna do a revote on it. Since you voted for it, then you have the right to ask for it to be reconsidered. And so the motion is now to reconsider CR 1, a resolution establishing a Fire Rescue Advisory Committee, just changing the name, but not the mission. Do I hear that? So that's an, that's a resolution you're introducing?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any questions with regard to that? Okay, let's call the roll, please.
A resolution that City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, creating an advisory committee to be known as Fire Rescue Advisory Committee, providing for membership qualifications and length of term and providing for the purpose and duties of such committee. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes. And now we have an obligation and opportunity to now appoint somebody from each of our districts to be members of that commission. Okay. Moving on to our resolutions, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names into the record?
Yes. I have two names for the January 10th, 2023 resolution. These are reappointments for the Charter Revision Board, Charter Revision Board. Judith Stern, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman. Economic Development Advisory Board, Dudley. Etienne Harvard, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman. And for tonight's resolution, for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Commissioner Pamela Beasley Pittman. Downtown Development Authority, Steve Hudson, and that's a consensus appointment, and that's a reappointment. And that rounds it out.
Okay. Are there any additional nominations to be made? Okay. There being none. So with regard to the, what was Mr. Hudson being appointed to?
He's being reappointed to the DDA.
Okay, all right.
Didn't we have an opening on there?
We still have that opening, which I think we're going to, I think we're going to take that up at the next meeting?
Okay, I thought we were taking that up tonight. I did receive three applications. But whatever everyone's pleasure is, that's okay.
I was kind of hoping to meet with these people.
Okay.
I just saw the nominations tonight.
Sure.
Is that okay with everybody? I'd like to be able to meet with these folks.
When is Mr. Ellis' term limited now?
December 31st.
Oh, okay.
The January 10th meeting, the first DDA meeting's January 12th, so we could-
Oh, so we could do it on January 10th. Okay, great.
Okay. So would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
A resolution that City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as a fourth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part here of. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you for those folks who have volunteered their efforts and, and have exhibited their continual commitment to the city. R 2, resolution approving the name of the Botanical Garden at Stranahan Park as the Joanne Smith Botanical Garden. Is Joanne Smith here? She makes the best chocolate chip cookies.
And, and macaroni salad.
I'd go for the macaroni salad.
Joanne, why don't you come up here so we could all acknowledge you and recognize you? Joanne, would you like to say a few words? This is the garden and the park next to the Women's Club.
Well, thank you. It's quite an honor. And any of you who know me, I speak for about 30 seconds, and then I start crying. But I really appreciate it. I just wanted to follow, you know, our ancestors of the Women's Club, who did such a phenomenal job getting our first park of the city and re-landscaping it and making it a beautiful place for us for a hundred and some years. So thank you very much. It's such an honor.
You're welcome. And thank you, Joanne, for all the work that you do for our community.
And thank you, what you've done there. You've really created a gem there. So people are very appreciative. Thank you.
Does someone like to introduce the resolution? Introduce. Please call the roll.
A resolution that City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the naming of the Botanical Garden located at Stranahan Park as the Joanne Smith Botanical Garden and authorizing installation of one sign within the boundaries of the Botanical Garden at Stranahan Park and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and that resolution is proudly approved. R 3, resolution approving an inter-local agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Fort Lauderdale Downtown Development Authority. I think the, the applicant has asked that be deferred to January 20- I think the, the applicant has asked that that be deferred to January 24th. Do I hear a motion to defer?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
It's been seconded. Please call the roll with regard to the deferment.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
No.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, so that item has now been deferred to January 24th. R4, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an 18th amendment to the landscape inclusive maintenance memorandum of agreement. That's a mouthful. For State Road A1A, Seabreeze Boulevard, with the Florida Department of Transportation for improvements within the right-of-way of State Road A1A and assumption of liability and hold harmless agreement with the TRR Bahia Mar Marina Village LLC and Ron Bahia Mar LLC. And I believe that title was changed, right?
Yes, there was an updated CAM, which spelled it correctly, Mar Marina Village LLC.
Right. Thank you. Any questions with regard to this item? I have, Mr. Shine has, for here for questions only. Any questions of Mr. Shine? There being none. Someone like to introduce the resolution? Introduced.
Second. I'm sorry, resolution, my apology.
It's okay. It shows your enthusiasm. Please call the roll.
A resolution that City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and authorizing execution of amendment number 18 to the District 4 State of, State of Florida Department of Transportation Landscape Inclusive Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement for State Road A1A for Installation and Maintenance of Landscape and Hardscape Improvements Within the Right-of-Way of State Road A1A and Assumption of Liability and Hold Harmless Agreement with TRR Bahia Mar Marina Village LLC and Ron Bahia Mar LLC and Providing for an Effective Date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Moving on to PH1, Public Hearing, a resolution approving a waiver of limitations at 2150 Southwest 23rd Avenue for the installation of two mooring pilings, piles extending a maximum of 45 feet plus or minus. I don't have anyone here to, except Mr. Shine is here for questions on behalf of the, the owner, but do you want to, is there any comments or presentations you'd like to make?
I do have a presentation. I can keep it brief.
Well, is there anyone?
We could just do questions only as well, that's.
Wait, is there anyone here who has any questions regarding the, the application? Is there anyone? I don't think, I don't think you need to, so. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
And that's for approval?
Yes.
A resolution that City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to section 47-19.3E of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, granting a waiver of the limitations of ULDR section 47-19.3D to permit Michael L. Scalisi and Helen M. Scalisi installation of two 12, 12-inch mooring piles extending a maximum of 45 feet plus or minus from the property line into the South Fork of the New River. Such property being located at 2150 Southwest 23rd Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and more particular to describe below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict here with and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Thank you, Mr. Shine. Now, PH2 and PH3, the applicant has requested that be deferred. Can we do that in one vote, Mr. Wallow?
No, they're two separate public hearings, so they'll have to announce.
Okay, so PH2, Public Hearing, the applicant has requested deferral until January 10th. Do I hear a motion to defer?
So moved.
So moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that's been deferred to now January 10th. PH3, a public hearing, resolution denying a waiver of limitations, applicants requesting a deferment until January 10th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to defer?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item has now been deferred to January 10th, 2023. We move on to PH4, Public Hearing, quasi-judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from Planned Resort Development District to Parks Recreation and Open Space District, North Seabreeze Boulevard, City of Fort Lauderdale. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any, any disclosures?
None.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
Just a site visit and discussion at the District 2 pre-agenda meeting last evening.
Okay, and Vice Mayor?
None.
None. Okay. No one has signed up to speak. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? There being none. Someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll with regard to closing public hearing.
I'm sorry, just public hearing.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced, but I have some comments also, Mayor. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Phil, could I ask you a couple of questions about this that came up last night at my meeting? And looking at the map, I'll just need to look at that a second. And just to start, we're all in favor of protecting these parcels by designating them parks, but on this particular one, on the Cortez Triangle Park, if you look behind the, you know, the Merryweather and the Wedgewood Court and Silver Seas, and I'm particularly talking, if you look at the map, you see C, D, E, and F, but parcel E also is where the.
Which exhibit are you on?
I'm sorry?
Which exhibit are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't even know if I have them listed. Hold on a second, I apologize. Exhibit, well, if you look at exhibit 1.
The location map?
Yes. And then, my question is, it looks like there's some area that could have been included in this, that's not included in this. We know that parcel E is where the Celine is going to be hopefully doing the public art placement as agreed to in that PDD application, but if you look at it, there just seems to be an area that's not included, that could be included here, and I'm wondering why it's not. There's no address there, but it's behind where the Merryweather and the Wedgewood Court and Silver Seas are. So if you look at, yes, if you look at parcels C, D, E, and F.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, can we get some clarification on the, on the exhibit that you're looking at? Is it the one with the purple and the green?
I'm looking at.
Or is it black and white?
Yes, hold on a second. I'm looking at the map, and I don't even know if I have this as a label as an exhibit, but I'm also looking at.
The reason I ask is the parcels we're looking at for this item are between Birch and Seabreeze, just north of Cortez.
Okay.
So those triangular pieces when you're driving down.
Right, right, but I think that we left a little piece out, and again, I don't have, I have the, it's chilly in here. Okay, if you look at this map, again, you know where the Celine is going?
Yes.
That's parcel E, right?
No, the Celine's to the east and a little north, I think, of where we are. Yeah.
Bill, do you have that map that we talked about last night? I apologize.
What are you, what are you, are you saying there's a little?
There's a little area that I would like to see.
It's like a little snippet that needs to be added?
Yeah, that, behind where the, behind where the Merryweather, the Wedgewood Court, and Silver Seas is, what parcel is that, Bill? Where those three properties are? There's a little, there are areas in there that I think should be included in the Cortez Triangle Park if we're going to designate it Park Area. Thank you, Bill.
There are buildings currently on there, are there not?
Yeah, but there are little, like slivers behind them, right? There's like little areas that need to be, I think, incorporated here.
That's not the Celine. We think we know which parcel you're talking about.
Okay.
Is it the one at the corner of Birch and Cortez? Are you talking about?
Is it at Birch and Cortez? Yes, it is at Birch and Cortez.
You're at Birch and Cortez. Yeah, there, there was a building there that's privately owned, and just to the north of that, along that same parcel, there is city property there, but there's a parking agreement that's in place, that's a long-term agreement that's with that same property.
That's, that's the reason, because of the parking agreement?
Yeah, we, we wouldn't rezonate to park with that use being there, because it's basically privatized through that agreement to the neighboring property owner, assuming, I'm talking about the same parcel you are.
I think we are.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, do you know where the Merry, the Merryweather, the Wedgewood Court, and Silver Seas are? Are tho, are those areas behind them, are they incorporated in this Cortez Triangle Park?
No, not by the Merryweather, no.
Why not?
I don't know if those are a part of the list that was under consideration. We can go back and look and bring it back to you.
Yeah, if we could just, I'm, I'm fine with this agenda item, don't get me wrong, but if we could just go back and look at that, and maybe we can just have offline further discussion, but I think we just need to look at some of those areas and see if we can also somehow incorporate it.
Sure, we'll take a look at it, no problem.
All right, thanks. I'm good, Mayor, I can, I can move this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so the ordinance is now introduced. Please call the roll.
In, in ordinance amending 47-1.6. B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations to the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale and Schedule A Revised Compilation Attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof so as to rezonate from PRD Planned Resort Development District to Parks Recreation and Open Space District, a portion of lots 12, 13, and 21, Block 2, and a portion of lots 11, 17, 18, Block 3, Lauderdale Mar, according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 7, Page 30 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located west of Seabreeze Boulevard, north of Cortez Street, east of Birch Road, and south of Castillo Street, all said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the item is now approved.
Mayor, before we move on?
Go ahead, yes.
Is there space for the walk-on motion I had regarding the city attorney?
We're going to bring that up at the end of the meeting.
Okay, I wasn't sure where it, it could come up.
Okay, so now we move on to the ordinance of first readings, OFR1. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations to include additional notice requirements for historic designation applications. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Don't introduce.
Okay. The ordinance has been introduced, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending subsection 47-27.7 entitled Historic Designation of the Unified Land Development Regulations of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, modifying notice procedures for public hearings to provide for sign notice to the public and mail notice to registered agents regarding applications for historic designation and applications for changes to historic designations, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved on first reading. OFR2, first reading, ordinance amending the non-bargaining unit classification table of the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale by creating two additional, two new classifications. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Any questions? Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the non-bargaining unit classification table of the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as amended by creating and adding two classifications and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved on first reading. OFR3, first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 4 regarding alarm systems. Any questions with regard to that?
I have a question. In the conference, I wasn't sure the direction, how to pose my question, so I'm asking the question in regards to the funds that are being collected. Is that a time now?
You want to answer that, Greg?
Sure. Commissioner, what would be your question?
It's more of a statement, I'm understanding the funds that are collected, what fund are they being allocated to?
Where are they going?
Yes.
So they go to the general fund?
Okay. I would like to suggest that they go to a specific aligned fund.
A specific line fund?
Yeah, to identify specifically where those funds should go.
Like an enterprise fund, in a way? To, to, and what would be the, what, where do you want that money to go to specifically?
I'm suggesting to, to the police department, because they're the ones who are going out and, you know, making a service call, and the funds are being allocated because of false alarms, and I feel like it should go back into the police fund, and that way can go towards benefits or whatever else that's needed to meet their demands and needs.
But there's also fire rescue too, that responds.
And code enforcement.
Yeah.
Code enforcement is really where, it's the code department that goes from home to home to verify that there are compliance with the alarm systems. I know that the police do respond in some cases, so I'm not sure it really, so, tell us a little bit about that, Greg.
So I'm going to ask Susan to talk a little more about that, and she can give you somewhat of how the, the fee is developed.
Yeah, absolutely. Susan Grand, Assistant City Manager. The item addresses some changes in the ordinance because we're changing the method of collection from in-house to outside. It does represent both police and fire false alarms. Currently, we collect about $500,000 a year, and as Greg said, those go to just the general fund, or I think, as I called it the other day, the big pot. Laura said it wasn't as big of a pot, but the pot of money. We expect, again, we won't know how much we'll collect under the new scenario with the outside vendor, but we're estimating about a million dollars a year, um, which will be collected under the new method.
So it goes towards police and fire?
Okay. Well, I would like to have a discussion where those funds are specifically allocated and not just in the general fund. That way the citizens also will see where those funds are going.
We can certainly, um, set up time to talk about that and see what those, what possibilities there are for doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Thank you.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending section four dash one entitled Definitions to add additional definitions, amending four dash two entitled Registration of Alarm Systems Alarm Certificate to add additional language under required registration that city may procure a third-party service, and amending section four dash nine entitled Service Fee by changing costs relating to fire rescue response to an emergency alarm and associated costs of the code ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, providing for correction of scrip and reserves and providing for effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved on first reading. These are ordinances now on second reading, uh, quasi-judicial ordinance rezoning from, uh, this is OSR One. Uh, quasi-judicial ordinance rezoning from Community Facility District to Residential Multifamily Low-Rise Medium Density District at seventeen hundred North Andrews Avenue. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
No.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Um, no additional disclosures. We met back on November thirtieth, and I mentioned it at the last meeting.
I have no additional disclosures. Commissioner Glassman?
No additional.
And Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay, so, um, any questions with regard to this ordinance? There being none, would someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Close public hearing, it's been moved, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed, OSR One. Would someone like, please introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale and Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made apart thereof, so as to rezone from Community Facility District to Residential Multifamily Low-Rise Medium Density District, a portion of lots twelve and twenty-nine and all lots thirteen and thirty, Placido Place resubdivision according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book Thirty-four, Page Thirty-six of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, located west of Northeast Third Avenue, north of Northeast Sixteenth Place, east of North Andrews Avenue and south of Northeast Seventeenth Court, all said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved on second reading. OSR Two, a second reading quasi-judicial ordinance rezoning from Community Facility District to Community Business District, seventeen hundred North Andrews LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
No.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay, someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on OSR Two, someone like to introduce it as an ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced, please call the roll.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale and Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made apart thereof, so as to rezone from CF Community Facility District to CB Community Business District, a portion of lots fourteen, fifteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, Placido Place resubdivision according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book Thirty-four, Page Thirty-six of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, located west of Northeast Third Avenue, north of Northeast Sixteenth Place, east of North Andrews Avenue and south of Northeast Seventeenth Court, all said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR Two is now approved on second reading. So, couple of things, first of all, we have the walk-on with regard to, uh, here we are, the appointment of the alternate and second alternate to the Broward League of Cities Board of Directors. I believe we talked about, uh, Commissioner Beasley Pittman being the, uh, the delegate, and, uh, now we need an alternate and second alternate to Broward League of Cities.
So, Mayor, uh, when we spoke to the Broward League, they asked if you, to just appoint, since the alternate and the second alternate are no longer there, appoint, uh, Commissioner Beasley Pittman as the alternate until April when they redo it for, for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, but with her going on as the alternate, she can, she can attend the meetings until then on your behalf.
So they want me to stay on?
Yeah, they just asked to, to fill in the, the blanks until April, yeah.
Of April twenty twenty-three?
Right. Yeah, just like four more months.
But the commissioner can certainly appear if I'm...
Yeah, on your behalf, right.
Okay. Okay, um, so, do I hear, would someone like to introduce a resolution appointing Commissioner Beasley Pittman as the alternate? Is there someone like to be a second alternate? Don't raise your hands all at once, what's that? Did you say something?
Introduce for, uh, Beasley Pittman?
No alternates, come on, you guys!
Okay, um, all right, the resolution's been introduced with regard to the alternate. Any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the City of...
Get a free lunch once a month. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
A resolution of the city commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida appointing Commissioner Pamela Beasley Pittman as alternate for the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's representation on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Board of Directors of the Broward League of Cities. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Absolutely.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and, uh, that resolution is now approved. Now, Commissioner Beasley Pittman asks that, uh, we now continue to discuss matters regarding our city attorney, Commissioner. Where do we go from here?
I make a motion?
Okay.
I made the motion that City Attorney Alan Boalow be placed on administrative leave immediately, and that we appoint Dwayne Spence as the interim.
We appoint whom?
Dwayne, Dwayne Spence, as the interim city attorney.
Mr. Spence, uh, is this something you are interested in? Do you feel comfortable doing this?
Good night, Mayor and Commissioners, um, I feel honored by, uh, being, uh, nominated for this post. I'm not interested in being the city attorney, but I will, for the sake of the office, accept the role as interim with the provision that I am, at the end of this period as interim, be appointed as a deputy, uh, city attorney. But I am not interested in serving as the city attorney.
Does the city commission appoint deputy city attorneys?
You do.
We do.
So, the distinction with deputies is that, as the same thing with deputy city managers, that they're hired and fired basically by the city commission, so they don't necessarily work for the city attorney. They're a separate, uh, a separate entity.
Uh, strangely, strangely, they're appointed by the city commission, but they can be fired by the city attorney.
Do we currently have a deputy?
We do not.
We do not, okay. Are there any other nominations for this position? Okay.
Do you need an amendment to the original motion, Mayor, for that?
Say it again?
Do you need an amendment to that original motion?
Well, unless the commissioner wants to, you know, amend her, her, um, her motion. The amendment would be to, to recognize...
A friendly amendment.
To recognize, uh, Dwayne Spence as a deputy once his, uh, interim appointment has concluded. Okay.
Yes, I stand with that amendment. We can move in that direction, yes.
Okay, um...
And just, again, as a housekeeping matter, when that time arises, that will have to be done by resolution. It can't be done by motion.
Yeah.
So that's not, so your action this evening actually won't solidify that decision. You'll have to come back and do a resolution.
Okay, so, uh, let me see if I understand this, so your motion is to terminate Mr. Boalow as of tonight? Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, is there gonna be any kind of severance or compensation, or, you know, how are we going to, um, you know, um, how are we gonna proceed with regard to that? Have you, did you give any thought to that, Commissioner?
I would, um, say we move in a sense of protocol. This is not the first time that we have, um, terminated a city attorney, so if we could, um, refer to protocol.
So, like precedent?
My contract requires no less than sixty days' notice, so that would be sixty days. So you can put me on administrative leave if you want, and I'll address that in a minute. And then I have, I'm entitled to twenty weeks of severance with benefits, and also my accrued, uh, vacation time, sick time, things of that sort, which would typically be done with regards to, uh, charter officer under contract.
Okay, so sixty days administrative leave means that we would, if, if the commissioner wants you terminated as of today, you'd get paid for sixty days plus the twenty weeks and all the other things that you mentioned, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Um, is that what you're saying?
And then the only, the only other caveat I would add is, again, in my responsibilities to the Florida bar and you as my client, you can, under contract, you're more than welcome to, you know, terminate me immediately. But there are legal ramifications to that, and I don't want to leave you in legal jeopardy. So I, Mr. Spence and I work very well together, so I can transition as best as possible.
Honestly, we're gonna need, we're gonna need you around to assist, uh, Mr. Spence and others of the staff as to...
And I'm happy to do that personally with him, but I cannot do that on administrative leave because per protocol, if I get put on administrative leave tonight, you're cutting off my email access, you're cutting off my computers, you're cutting off my badge, you're cutting me off completely. And it's very hard for me to transition you to, so, again, if you want to do that, you can, and that's fine with me, but I want to be clear that if there's legal ramifications, they're not on me.
Yes, and Mayor, I'm, I'm, I just wanted to say that I was gonna bring that up, actually, about administrative leave, and we're not able to have that, that transition. I'm not gonna be voting for this motion anyway, I think it's really a bad move for the city. I heard all everyone's reasons today, they're all just personal grudges, not personal experience that really encompasses, you know? We had an evening meeting tonight, I looked at all these agenda items. Every single one of those practically was run through the legal department. I don't think people know how much goes through the legal department. I think this is a waste of taxpayer dollars to put, uh, the city attorney on any kind of leave or just even pay severance or whatever, and to, and to do any kind of interim position, and then we don't even know, are we gonna be hiring from within, are we gonna be going on a national search? I absolutely am astonished that we are even thinking of doing this. Again, as I mentioned this afternoon, when two months ago, by unanimous vote, we thanked the city attorney for his work and his department's work, uh, with a substantial increase in pay, and then there's an election, and just because there's an election and people have personal issues or they didn't like the way they were treated or talked to, or... Is that really about what's the best for the City of Fort Lauderdale and for our staff? So if this passes tonight, I apologize to the residents of the City of Fort Lauderdale. I apologize to our staff because no one on our staff should be treated this way without due process, without consideration of a man or a woman's work over the course of a year. That's why we have yearly performance reviews, we just had it two months ago. So, Mayor, you know, I, I've worked with Mr. Spence over the years, I know him very well. Excellent man, but I will not be supporting, um, this motion. It's a bad move for the City of Fort Lauderdale, especially as this city commission begins its work, uh, anew as a new body. This is, it's the wrong tone to set, and it, it makes absolutely no sense to me.
Mayor, can we hear from the rest of the commission, please?
Sure, uh, start with Commissioner Herbst.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I think as far as the issues that were raised with respect to continuity of the office, I've been here long enough, I've been through, you know, several city managers, several city attorneys, and I have never seen a problem with continuity or transfer of operations, particularly when we have somebody who's internal to the department stepping up and taking over. Uh, in fact, in the case of the city auditor's office, we had an external, Mr. Pat Riley, step in and take over, and again, without significant interruption in the operation of the offices, and without that transition that you're referring to. So I think there's nobody in the city, any one individual, whose presence here, charter officer or not, is critical to the operation. So we have a great organization, we've got great staff in the city attorney's office, and I'm confident that we'll be able to move forward without any interruption with any of the things that are currently in the works. I know a lot of the things are being handled by outside counsel, those things that are being handled internally. I have no doubt that they will continue to move forward without any hiccup. So I, I don't see, uh, a challenge in what's been presented.
Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
My only thought was, um, Mr. Boalow had volunteered earlier, uh, when I'd spoke to him a few days ago to help with the transition, um, and to making it a smoother transition, that's my, my one issue. Commissioner Beasley, if you think might be overlapped just to help with the transition to the new city attorney, that's, that's my one thought.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
A thought maybe retaining, uh, Mr. Boalow to help with the transition, to make it a smooth transition into the new city attorney. That's, that's my one thought.
Are you suggesting that he, he not be on administrative leave immediately, that there be a, like a couple...
He had volunteered to help with the transition to, to make it a little smoother when the new, when the city attorney takes over.
Well, if you separate him from the office, he doesn't have access to his, his email or anything.
Right, right. That, that was my thought.
So you're okay with that?
No, no, my thought was, it might be smoother to allow him to help with the transition, to not terminate him immediately, but give him like sixty days or thirty days' notice, so, uh, he could help transition to the new city attorney.
May I, so, I, I don't think those are, those are not mutually exclusive. He can be on administrative leave and still have access to email. You, you, you don't have to necessarily disconnect the email just because somebody is working from home.
Well, that's not what Alan just said a few minutes ago.
I would disagree, we could leave, we could leave the email in place, that's, that's an administrative function. We make a determination as to whether we want to continue to have somebody, allow somebody to have email access or not.
I would leave that to, again, we'd have to go back, I, I, that was my understanding. They'll leave that up to the city manager and IT, I don't know if IT has an issue or has a policy on that.
So Commissioner Beasley Pittman, what is, uh, what do you, what, what is your approach to this, then? Is it your motion?
It's my motion, I stand on the ground, so what I've, um, placed, that it's immediate, it happens tonight.
And as a courtesy to Mr. Spence, I will waive the requirement of written notice if my termination tonight suffices. Don't need to give him extra work.
Okay.
Wait, could you repeat that, I just didn't hear the...
Under my contract, I'm entitled to written notice of my termination, I'm waiving that in order to... I'm just waiving it so you don't have to go through the formality of writing me a letter explaining that you're terminating me.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to terminate Mr. Boalow effective immediately of being put on sixty days administrative leave with pay, and then the severance, uh, um, the severance items that he identified, uh, would be consistent with the city's policy of terminating, uh, employees, uh, as we have done in the past, and...
It's based on my contract, so you, if you have a copy, I can send you a copy of my contract, it's all spelled out.
Okay, all right, but you identified it on the record, so...
I did, yes.
So, um, that's the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
So I just want to be clear, so this is administrative leave, so it's effective immediately, and he will not be working for the next sixty days?
If he works, it's as, if he, if he works for the next, any, within the next sixty days, it's as a volunteer to help Mr. Spence.
I have great respect for Mr. Spence and want nothing but the success for him that he deserves, so I will do my best to help him transition. Uh, he's been an incredible asset to this office for many, many, many years. So I will do my best in order to do that, uh, even if I'm on administrative status, which does create some limitations. But, so you know, at that point, the, the person that's gonna be signing your documents, the person that's gonna be making the decisions and so on and so forth, uh, again, can't do that on administrative leave without being privy to everything that I normally would have coming to work, so that will be upon the suspense. If you're gonna make him interim, you can't have a, you can't have a city attorney in interim at the same time. So if you put me on administrative leave, it's gonna be up to Mr. Spence to pick up the ball, you can't have both.
Right, we understand that, but it, but if you do it, it's as a volunteer, it's not as an employee. Okay, please call the roll.
I don't know that we had a second on that.
Yeah, we did get a second.
I'm sorry?
There was no second.
There was no second.
But Pam, you would not entertain thirty days, uh, supposed to immediate, Pam. You want to terminate it immediately, you wouldn't entertain thirty days for transition, you want it immediate. Would you entertain changing it to thirty days to, to help transition?
Commissioner, uh, Beasley Pittman didn't agree with your recommendation.
Okay, fine, okay, fine.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
No.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
No. The item is approved three to two. Is there any further business of the commission? Okay, well...
Just, Mayor, I just wanted to thank you, Commissioner Glassman and former commission. Uh, it was a privilege serving as a city attorney all these years. Uh, it's been a wonderful experience, we accomplished a lot, and we survived a lot, not the least being COVID and the variety of shutdowns that we had to...
I couldn't have done it without you through COVID, I'll tell you.
So I do want to thank you for the opportunity, and, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for staff, the directors that I've worked with, and I've had the privilege to come work with and, and, and get to know. And I would just, uh, implore you to please, uh, please treat them well.
And we will, and thank you, Alan, I want to add my thank you as well to the mayor's thank you. It's been a pleasure, I've always admired your professionalism and your work ethic, and your entire team, actually. I've always been very impressed these last four years and eight months with the legal department. Again, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but I, I think this is a bad move, and I just wanted to thank you for all the work, and I know that you'll be fine, um, if there's anything I can do in the future or whatever, please let me know. But I wanted to thank you for all of your work. Excellent attorney, you always represented the commission well. Excellent attorney, you always represented the commission well. As I said earlier today, even though I did not always agree with you on certain issues, I always respected you, and I admired the work because you followed the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have to echo those comments, you know, all the years that I've worked with you, it's, you have helped navigate the city through some very difficult times. You mentioned COVID, but even more challenging were sometimes neighborhood issues, and, and you have helped to, help us understand how the law works and how to apply it, and, and